Hello, welcome to Port Weneme City Council Review. I'm your host, Tom Dunn, and we're going to go over the last three meetings that we had. And with me today, I have the interim city manager, Chief Salinas, welcome.
Hi, Tom, thanks for having me.
And we have a city council member, Will Berg. Will, welcome.
Thank you, Tom.
Glad to have you here. Just to start with, well, it's been interesting. This is the first program we've had all year. And there have been some changes in Port Weneme. And I think it's interesting that among the three of us, we have a couple of things really in common. We're golf addicts, as we all are. We like doing videos for the people in the city. I know you do some on your own, and Will loves to be in front of the camera. I like it too. And third is, we all want to make Port Weneme the best place possible for our residents to live in. And so that's why we're here, is to update you on what the city council is doing, and let you know where they stand and what's moving on. The first thing is, Chief, since you're the interim city manager, can you bring us up to date on where the process of hiring a new city manager stands?
Sure. On December 2nd, I took on the role of interim city manager, and I'm working both as police chief and interim city manager since that time. We started a hiring process for city manager, where our city council actually conducted interviews on a Saturday morning on January 25th. They have selected a candidate, and we're currently in negotiations with that candidate to see if we can come up with an agreement, and hopefully have a city manager here sooner or later. We're looking now at the potential at the end of February, beginning of March, that we'll have somebody in place.
Oh, that's three weeks away, so...
Yes, let's hope.
And that'll be an interesting thing to get him in on everything that's going on. And I hope that we can have the same relationship that I had with Rod Butler in doing a citizens forum, which was fabulous, in getting people to funnel their questions and suggestions through us. And we would go to the department heads like yourself, and the Public Works, and find out what could be done, and if it could be, all of you guys jumped right on it. And if it couldn't, at least we had an answer as to why. And so the transparency and the information flow has improved greatly. Will, there's been some changes in the city council. Would you update us on that?
Yes, we have a new mayor. That's Laura Hernandez. Unfortunately, Laura is out of town now. Our mayor pro temp is Sylvia Munoz Snop. And so we're ready to go to work. We've again had a couple of meetings already, and we're off and running again for a very bright 2020.
Okay, let's get into it. And we're gonna start with the December 2nd meeting, and go over a few of the points there. The issue that was brought up in open forum by, I believe it was David Schrivenner, is about what's been going on with the traffic on the local streets here. Both the amount of traffic, the type of traffic, and traffic safety, which does expand itself into the school areas and the suburbs, I mean, the residential areas. Can you bring us up to date on what you and the Public Works Department have done in trying to address this issue?
Sure. So recently, there has been an increase in truck traffic along the Weneme Road corridor. Some of that reason is because of increased security at the port, because they've become containerized. And their containers are mandated to be searched now through customs. And they don't have the actual searching equipment on the port property. So several of these containers actually have to be trucked off the port, searched, and then brought back to the port. And so that has created some additional truck traffic along the Weneme Road corridor. We've also seen an increase in speeding along the Weneme Road corridor for our morning commute and afternoon commute. So we've done a couple of things to help mitigate both those items. One, we just recently put up a digital speed limit board on Weneme Road just last week, which will now show and display your current speed. And the speed limit along Weneme Road is 35 miles per hour. We've increased traffic enforcement, as many people have already quickly found out these past three weeks. We've issued 50 speeding citations in our community over the last three weeks, with a majority of the speeders either coming from the port, the naval base, or some of the local vehicle processing plants. And so we've noted, just this week, a significant correction in speeding behavior, which should definitely help quite a bit, not only with the speed itself, but with the noise and everything else that comes along with speeding, and thus increase pedestrian safety, as they're crossing some significant crosswalk intersections during school hours in the morning.
I remember, I don't remember which meeting it was, but David was talking about the house they have along Weneme Road, and they can feel vibrations from the trucks going up and down at high speeds. And so that is something, hopefully, we can keep an eye on and see that it is better. I don't drive on Weneme Road that much. I tend to spend it on Ventura, right out front here. The people coming from Weneme Road after work and in the mornings, they turn, and they see the police station, and they just floor it. They do, they go by there pretty darn fast.
Yes.
And you come right upon the school, which is a half a block away. And so that's an area that... And there's other schools I know we've had...
Well, we've just installed new lights now at the school crossing intersection. These are new LED lights, much more noticeable.
I saw them the other day, putting them up.
They're up and running.
Late last week, yeah.
Yeah, we actually have them up now at Ventura Road, and Clara Street, and Ventura Road, and Scott Street.
Good. That's really gonna help.
Absolutely.
Those two areas are quite dangerous, but I'm glad to hear. And that's what the people want to hear, that you guys are really addressing the issues, that they come to the city council meetings, or email us, and we try to get an answer for it. Also, there was a new hire, Will, the human resources manager, which is a whole new post in the city, I believe. Can you explain who that is and what they do?
It's been quite some time since we've been going a long time now without a human resources officer. And now we have one, Melanie Hanisco. Hanisco, yes. And she has hit the ground running. We have a lot of anticipation. She's really needed. She looks like the right person for this job, and we're excited. And we're looking forward to start recruiting new employees here at the city. I understand we even have a new police officer with the police department.
Well, in the last few months, we've hired a couple of new officers. We have one in the police academy right now. Her name is Kim Mora. And in the last nine to 12 months, we hired an academy complete lateral officer. His name is Ricardo Miranda.
Miranda?
Miranda. He's part of the Miranda family.
How about that?
From Oxnard.
Put him in the park.
Yeah. He's been out on his own now for the last several months. And so those have been the two most recent additions in our community.
Very, very good.
I was wondering, are they writing tickets to speeding tickets out there?
We actually have Henry Montalongo and Officer Ryan Bates have been, the two officers have been out every morning for the last three weeks, handing out speeding citations and crosswalk violation citations.
Okay. Another issue that was brought up at the December 2nd meeting was sidewalk safety. And I wonder how many people are affected by this. You know, I didn't live in an area where we had sidewalks down at the beach. Didn't notice that too much. But in the neighborhoods, I've heard Council Ngama and a couple of other people talk. I think it's mainly about, I don't know if it's all coral trees, but we have a lot of big old trees, and the roots are starting to, you know, crack up the sidewalks and stuff. And we have, let's see, do I have, I have it here? Oh, I've got a couple of folders or papers, program handbooks put out on that. And you can, are these available on the website?
If not, they will be, and they can always come by the city and get a copy. But that's what we're about to put out to our public, so they know how to replace their sidewalk if they experience...
And the procedure to go through.
Correct.
Yeah. Will, what was the, I think, I don't know if this meeting that Stephen brought it up, but he was explaining what it causes out there and the dangers.
Stephen has been looking at this for some time now, and he asked me to come out, and he showed me some spots that were definitely in need of repair.
Just like this, right?
Exactly. And so I thought, well, this should be easy to take care of. And I went right over to Public Works, and they were very well aware. They could even tell me addresses exactly where the biggest cracks were. And I said, "Well, it's time that we got these fixed." And he says, "Slow down a minute." And what I found out from that visit was that although the city owns all the sidewalks, it's public area, the sidewalk on your driveway, and one chunk of concrete on each side, one section of concrete on each side, is the responsibility of the homeowner. And I said, "What? Come again? And who owns these?" "We do." "But who's responsible?" "The citizen is." Okay, and while he was talking to me, he was working on his computer, and he pulled out the ordinance and handed it to me, and said, "Read." And sure enough, he's right. And I did my research, Los Angeles, Oxnard, most cities in Ventura County, most all cities, same ordinance. And what is that about? Come to find out that that is in fact the case. So I thought the best way to go after this would perhaps be by addressing the ordinance itself. Perhaps we can find out a program where we can work with the homeowner on getting these things fixed. What we've done now is the city and the Public Works Department, they have a sidewalk inspection and maintenance program that they rolled out just our last council meeting. And this is a very comprehensive, very thorough program. They're gonna be inspecting sidewalks literally all year long. At the end of the year, they start the same program again, looking at sidewalks. They're gonna be working with the homeowners, I believe it's 90 days now is going to be the timeframe. And we'll work with the homeowners to get those sections fixed. Part of the thing that I didn't think about was many of these sidewalks are located where there are HOAs. And the homeowners associations are the ones who planted the tree that created the crack in the sidewalk.
They weren't required to by the city?
Required to plant a tree that's gonna break the sidewalk. Find a tree that will crack the sidewalk, please.
Find one?
Is that what we told them?
Oh, I don't remember.
Yes, we are a tree city, and we do like our trees, as all the homeowners do. But I know in my HOA that I live in, when you take a tree out, the policy of the city is to put a tree back. Policy, not ordinance. We have to look that up, maybe. It might be a little bit different. But as for the type of tree, I don't believe the city will dictate the exact tree you have to put in. There is a list that you can choose from. Our HOA took out a tree next to my driveway recently, and put in a different kind of tree. As long as the HOAs are on top of this, I think we're gonna be fine. With our inspection and maintenance program that really has been driven, and the whole impetus came from Councilmember Ngama, we think we're gonna be able to get a handle on our sidewalk repairs that we're gonna need to take care of. And it'll be a while. It takes a year to inspect them all, and then we start the same inspections all over again. We will go after this, and we will get these sidewalks fixed.
I know when it was first brought up, it sounded relatively simple, and...
Sure did.
Easy to do, you know, a kindergartner couldn't figure that. No, it was a bureaucratic nightmare to get through. But once we understand how to do it, I think it'll fall into place.
So just to correct something that Will said, the original ordinance had it at 30 days to address and remedy your sidewalk situation. Now they're moving it to 60 days.
60, huh?
And now that we have a sidewalk inspection and maintenance program in place, we will now be bringing the ordinance back to council at our next meeting on February 18th.
Okay. Thank you for that correct information. Oh, I know what it is. Is the city going to be notifying all the residents how this program operates? Again, will it be on the city website?
Yeah, we'll be putting stuff out on the city's website, as well as social media, which will include how to get a copy and learn about our sidewalk maintenance program.
Good, all right. The next issue was brought up in the December meeting to get the city aware of it, and get the media to get the information out. And that was the 20th anniversary of the era of Alaska Flight 261 memorial anniversary. The 20th one coming up. And of course, it's February now. We've already had it. We did a videotape of it and sent it off to the director of the memorial for the residents, or excuse me, not residents, but for the families that were involved in it. Steve Campbell sent me an email back saying, "Thank you so much for this." And what he does is he sends out the video all across the country, because now the families are, after 20 years, it's spread out, the kids and all that. So we get feedback from many, many states on that. And one thing they said, both you guys and myself were at the meeting, was it was Alaska Airlines, the head guy came out, and he said he had never seen a city get behind an accident like this, and support for so many years the families and the name of the flight, and making a memorial there, and keeping it clean as we can. So I think that's high praise that all of us should really, really be proud of. And anytime you go by the memorial down at the beach, if you see anything lame, trash, or whatever, pick it up. Do what you can, make that area clean. Because another thing he said was, they have people that come out here, the families and stuff, every other year, every year, it depends on where they live, and they just love to go see that. So it's not just a one-time thing. It goes on, you know, all year long for these people. And they send their love to the people of Port Weneme.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, you made mention of how clean the memorial is, and that's thanks to the weekly cleanups that we do, that start at the memorial every Saturday beginning at 8:30. So if anyone ever wants to come out and join us, pretty much every Saturday at 8:30, come on down and help us clean up the memorial, as well as clean up our beach.
And this last celebration was actually a two-day event. On Thursday, I believe it was, the people, the families of those involved took a boat ride out to the site, and were able to stay out there. And they were at the exact moment of the crash, came back. You know, they've created a lot of great friendships out of all these years. One of the leaders actually said, you know, when they first met, he was still just a brother, single, unmarried. Now he's got two kids, three kids, and just had a great time. And the families just get on very, very well. A lot of very long-lasting friendships have been formed because of this annual event that they all share together.
And when they come in, they spend a couple of days and nights here. They have met a lot of people, and are just thrilled with the way we work with them. And I know our camera people here, the video owners, Kathleen and Michael, have so many pictures of the beach, and they went and did the Saturday morning, Friday morning cleanup before that, to make it pristine as they could for, it's called waxing, the memorial. And it was very interesting that the memorial is a sundial. And the sundial is set up, it looks a little weird in that the way the numbers are placed, but it is placed that way so that every January 31st, is it 3 o'clock?
4:20.
4:20, that sundial.
4:22.
4:22 shines right on the shadow, right on 4:22. Amazing. So thanks for the cleaning up, and all the help we can get with the cleanups every Saturday morning at 8:30. We greatly appreciate it, and it's growing. I mean, there's more and more people out there every week. And I think Michael, who helps us with the videos, has become addictive. He really enjoys being out there and doing something. This all stemmed from Steve Ngama seeing this one guy who used to do all the cleanup with a box and a sticker. And four or five years ago, he died, and Stephen went out there and started picking up on his own, and then built it into this weekly cleanup thing, and the beach is due. You know, and I was just noticing, you don't see as much trash laying around the parking lots and stuff. I don't know if we got rid of the seagulls, or we just cleaned it up a lot better. But it's made a big difference. So thanks to all you guys who work on that really hard. Okay, that was the main stuff we had for the December 2nd meeting. The next meeting was December 16th. And the December meetings get a little thin. There's not a lot going on. People are out of town in the holidays and stuff. But we do have a couple of things that we want to bring up. One is the Habitat Humanity land purchase. The Habitat Humanity, I think many of us have heard of, but it has to do with housing. But can you explain to us what this group is doing in Port Weneme to get this going? Who of you?
Habitat for Humanity has been in Ventura County now for many, many years. And they build homes, not condominiums, they build actual homes. And they get volunteers to come and work with them. And among the volunteers are the people that they're actually arranging loans for, who are going to be purchasing the house. So they put in some sweat equity into the home that they're building. We currently have a piece of property, what's the name of the street? San Felipe's. It's just outside the gate of the Navy Base on Pleasant Valley Road, which, as you recall, goes in, but goes west quite some distance. Just as you come out, if you make a right-hand turn, there's a small parcel there. I believe they're gonna, they're looking at anywhere from five to six units. These are gonna be small, two-bedroom homes, et cetera. And we did sign off on an agreement with Habitat for that parcel there for them to build on, and they are currently getting their financing together. And we expect sometime this year, 2020, for them to start construction of homes. These are all affordable housing loans that are being made. You would be surprised who qualifies for affordable housing here in Ventura County.
They really have a plan of action.
Yes.
And not only in the way they operate, but how they fix it up so that the people, not only, like you said, have a hands-on experience with this, but they understand and are qualified what their responsibility is. And they said it's worked, you know, great. The families have become very stable, and they have their jobs, and they really like it. I think it's a great thing for the community.
And we, you know, if we can build up the number of homeowners in the community, all the better for the city of Port Weneme.
Right, okay. The other issue brought up on the meeting of 12/16 was the just the work repair or design on the community center and the library. How's that coming along, and what's involved, and where do we stand with that?
Andrew, you're involved in that quite a bit, so...
So with our new revenue coming in, coming in from cannabis, as well as our Measure U money, we're now seeing some industrial revenue. So we are gonna start reinvesting back into the infrastructure of our community, which includes our community center, which is essentially the hub of our community. There's so many programs that are facilitated out of that location, whether it be senior programs, youth programs. We have many events there, so we wanted to reinvest back into that building, which is almost 50 years old. The last time it was refurbished is in 1993.
It was built in the 70s.
Seventy, early 70s, I believe. And so it's due for another renovation. And so now that we have some money in our general fund, we want to reinvest into our community center for the next 50 years. And so we are now gonna, we're looking at partnering with our library, which uses the same building, and perhaps creating a model where we have a shared lobby. We perhaps expand on our main meeting room at the community center, upgrade it with Wi-Fi, new roof, solar panels, just give it a really good fixing. And so we currently have an assessment going on right now with a local architectural firm, and they'll be providing us with some options here over the next couple of months to see how much we want to invest in our community center.
Well, it's great to have it read, designed, and built in before it gets too old, and then it becomes major problems. You mentioned the library. I think it was back in October, we had a new librarian take over, and Dolly Knight is her name. And two years ago, I did a video tour of the library with Bernadette Dow. And it's not, well, you're too young. Will and I, the libraries are not what they were when we...
Not what they used to be.
It used to be, the library would walk around and point your finger, "Be quiet, be quiet." Everything they have in that little library is on file on their computers. You can get anything they have online. The programs the schools have, you can rent, or you can pull out any book that the library carries, I think in the county, through that system. And here's something that blew my mind. About six or eight months ago, they brought in a, let's see, it's called the copy machine that does, oh, the 3D copy.
3D printer.
3D printer, where there are six-year-olds, eight-year-olds, 10-year-olds sitting at these computers, which have a program that you put in for whatever you want to make. And it has arms and different stuff, and it moves and pours hot plastic into a mold of whatever you're trying to make. And it cools down, and then you take it out, and you have little toys, da-da-da. I've heard you can even make guns out of them. I don't like that idea too much. But it's amazing what the libraries do these days. And they're doing a little bit of remodeling at the library, which might be in conjunction with this. But Dolly said she would be thrilled for us to do another tour of it as soon as she gets some of the new sections of the library up and running. And it is a jewel of a place for the parents and stuff to bring their three- and four-year-old kids and, you know, just experience what's available. Because I know, talking to the Weneme School supervisor, when the children enter kindergarten, they have to be, this is not the right word for a four- or five-year-old, computer literate. But if they're not halfway there, they are gonna be so far behind.
It's a handicap.
You're right, it is. And I know, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old great-granddaughter that can take an iPhone and just find stuff all day long with it. And I don't like her to do that. We want her outside. Will, you'll remember when our parents, you're still too young for this. When our parents would send us out the door at 6, excuse me, at 8:00 in the morning, we'd come home for lunch, they'd send us back to the park, come home at 5:00, every summer day. You're outside playing and doing stuff and socializing. And we need our kids today to have as much of that as we can get to them. And you're a young father, and I'm sure you see this, you have to deal with that.
Getting the kids off of the Wi-Fi, getting them out from in front of the TV, and getting them out in the outdoors to doing some regular activity, physical fitness.
Right. Okay, let's go to the next meeting, which was January 21st. And we talked again in open forum about the traffic, which was more or less what you did cover here already. But also, David Schrivenner brought up Miranda Park. And I did a video with Kathleen back in April of what sorry condition it was in. And I think David came in and said there have been noticeable changes. And if you guys could explain what is going on, and what's the future for Miranda Park?
Okay, there's a few things going on at Miranda Park, particularly the sidewalk repair. Public Works has just entered into a contract with a local contractor to repair all of the broken and cracked sidewalks in and around the park. We've improved the lighting around the park with LED lighting. We're currently tunneling or trenching so we can get some Wi-Fi out there at the park along, so we can install some cameras to be permanently fixed at the parks so the department can, police department can see what's happening there. We've also, as you know, have added pickleball courts out there that is extremely popular. I'm out there now most Saturdays playing pickleball. Uh playing pickleball. Um so we've done, oh, we now put some gates up, which uh closes the park at ten o'clock at night. So we don't have people uh using the facilities after uh ten o'clock at night. Uh so there've been a lot of improvements at the park, oh, including uh we've trimmed back some trees uh this past month. So there's been a lot of positive improvements, along with the basketball court resurfacing uh this past year, so. Uh we're starting to see more and more activity at the park.
That's uh, that's wonderful because just the uh, the gopher holes and stuff and the. Softball or baseball infield were just a total wreck. And uh I hope that that is being done. I haven't looked at it.
We're we're still working on a few things and uh the gopher infestation is still a problem we're working on. As well as repairing some of the parking lot medians. Uh so that's kinda like the next phase now in our improvement of Miranda Park.
My uh wife told me that when she lived in Camarillo, there was a company that came to the city and to the parks. And they had a special way of getting rid of the gopher holes. Once you did it, they wouldn't come back. It seems like most parks and. I had it in San Jose when we played softball, guys getting their knees torn up because they would step in holes. And uh but when you put the dirt in it, it lasts for a couple of months and then it's gone. But there's somebody in Camarillo that did the work there. It might be something you might want, contact them and see, see what it uh is. Uh one other question I'd like to ask you, Chief, is uh what David has uh brought up and. Uh a good number of the citizens have uh expressed the same uh point is. It's been talked about, including I think within the police department, of having a officer or some uh police uh exposure. At the park. Uh I don't know if you can do it full-time, but at least if people knew who. Are doing things that maybe they shouldn't, just knew that you guys were coming through a couple of times a day, just to whizz through. That they might have to go find another place.
Absolutely, with the uh regular foot patrols we do there every day, we are looking at. With the renovation of the community center uh happening here in the near future, we'll need to find a temporary location for our community. Uh Recreation Director out there, so the potential relocation area is gonna be Miranda Park, so we can help. Reinvigorate it with some recreation activities, we can facilitate some programs out of there, along with all the improvements. And we're hoping that that uh kinda gets the ball started and then when she's ready to go back, we keep someone there uh to keep. Other recreation programs uh going on.
That's uh great news for the people who used to go there. And uh the tenants has slowed down and hopefully now uh, and we need to publicize this as much as we can that. Hey, uh here's uh make what we should do with Kathleen and Michael, let's go out and do another video of it. And uh, cause I notice, I remember the trees were really in bad shape and uh were starting to root. Tear up the tennis courts and again after nine months, so uh I'd like to report on that and let people know what's going on. Well, let's go to something uh. The pension funding. Uh for the city employees, that was brought up as something, a a gentleman came and made a presentation on that. Was his name Paul?
Uh Peter.
Peter, Peter, yeah. Uh can you just update us on what?
I think that was the meeting I missed.
Was that the one, one you missed? Okay. It's it's very detailed and uh. I think what is being presented are two or three options for the city to decide on how to, how to handle this. And just to let people know, this is a county-wide problem. Every city is facing this to a different uh degree.
Not just county-wide, this is statewide. There are four hundred and eighty-two cities in the state of California. I don't think anybody is fully funded yet. I am familiar uh with our program and uh we're in much better shape than most cities are. But nobody is one hundred percent funded at this time. And I don't believe anybody ever will ever become one hundred percent funded. But um we are, uh again, the city is economically a little healthier than we've been in the past. We are putting money into uh our pension funds and uh we need to put more and uh. I know that there's a sentiment uh on the council for us to do just that, so. We will be funding that pension uh liability that we have and uh. Getting ourselves even healthier than we already are, but uh revenue is coming in and that's part of what we're gonna be uh looking after. And we will.
Yeah, I I what I understand is that the people hired in the last year or two are under a different pension formula.
That's correct.
Which should uh make it not as severe as the ones that were put out when the economy was booming.
E- exactly. We have two types of employees, but one is called classic, the other one is called pepper. The classic employee is that employee who has been in Calpers for some years now. And uh they are on a certain formula that cannot be uh changed. However, a new formula was made for new employees coming in that they would call pepper and I believe that was in twenty twelve?
Around there, yes.
Around twenty twelve. Any employee hired after twenty twelve get, are on a different pension schedule, if you will. Well, when we budget. For new employees or uh to fill positions that are empty right now, we have to budget, we have to budget for a classic employee. And that's that the highest amount of money that we would be budgeting for. Sometimes we don't get a classic employee, sometimes we get somebody new right out of college. Well, that's a pepper employee. We can save on that budget then, that we had been putting money aside for, and that helps us. Keep the balance and that, all cities are are in the same situation. However, uh you, we're well-funded now and like I say, we are going to be hiring more employees. Uh whether they're classic or pepper, it will make no difference. We will hire the best employees that we can find for the jobs. There's no doubt about that. But some of them are brand new and that's to our benefit.
Well, uh it's something that definitely needs to be looked at and scrutinized and.
Absolutely.
Uh makes sense uh to to everybody and to the residents who are the taxpayers who have to foot that bill. Chief, I don't know if you have anything to do with this, the uh tobacco and vapor product licensing?
Ordinance, yes. So uh I can't really expand too much on it, other than that we have. Uh adapted a new ordinance as it relates to tobacco and electronic vaping. Uh we decided to take a stance on this issue as was presented to us by the Future Leaders of America. Who came before our city council and reminded us that we had an F grade as related to uh tobacco and uh youth access to tobacco. So we decided to take the same approach as some of our neighboring cities, including Oxnard and Ventura, and amended our tobacco ordinance. Uh which is um very similar to what the state has in terms of uh having access to flavored tobacco uh for people under the age of twenty-one.
That's makes the headlines two or three times a week now with what uh, what has been going on and. The good and bad points about it, if there are, you know, uh good points, but uh.
Unintended consequences.
Yes, yeah, they're, they, and they happen quickly. That's the scary part. You know, just regular tobacco, you know, can take thirty years for you to have your lungs go, but this, guys are having uh. Comas or seizures within a couple of months, so glad you're uh looking into that. Uh you presented some good news at this meeting uh about the the crime update for Port Wainimi?
Yes, so let's talk about crime uh for two thousand nineteen. Violent crime in the city of Port Wainimi is down thirty percent. So you know, the typical, people thought because we were bringing in all these dispensaries, that uh crime was gonna come with them and. People commonly think one of the myths is that uh dispensaries are a hotbed for criminal activity and. The fact is, is illegal dispensaries are a hotbed for criminal activity and not those that are highly regulated. And that's what we have here in the city of Port Wainimi. Highly regulated uh dispensaries that follow the rules. So we have a thirty percent reduction in violent crime, along with a one percent reduction in property crime, which results into an overall. Crime reduction of five percent in our city. Um some people see that, hey, I I always see violent things happen in our community and it seems like violent crime is up. Well, that's not true. It's actually the fact that we're getting the information out to our citizens regularly via social media, press releases. Um Wainimi Voice, so we're getting all of that information out and it's. There's actually fewer incidents in in the city as were, there were many years ago, which is the fact that we're getting that information out now to the. Uh citizens uh sooner than later.
You know, Tom, if there's one thing that the citizens of Port Wainimi could do. To reduce our crime level even more, just one thing, that would be locking your cars. You've gotta lock your cars. It's amazing the number of people that don't think about it, uh but I can tell you. If you, if you uh leave your car outside overnight, somebody is gonna be checking, whether it's locked or unlocked. And it's not gonna be the right people that are checking. Make it a point, lock your cars at night.
I know the police department has made points of this numerous times and you do have a monthly campaign sometime during the year, don't you?
Uh well, we try and get the word out as often as possible, so there are two drivers to our crime rate here in Port Wainimi and. Uh they have to do with shoplifting and theft from vehicle. And the one that we can quickly address and get people to change their behavior that will actually affect our crime rate is just simply locking your car at night. With over two hundred and seventy-five uh theft crimes in our city, over half of them come from theft from motor vehicles. And uh you think about that, that would drive our already low crime rate down to rates that we've never seen before.
Let me make this point, and I I heard a little bit about it, I can't remember if it was you or somebody else, but. And Willie live in HOAs. People are misguided that they're safe there. All a person has to do is when somebody comes in through the gate with their car, opens up, one guy can come in. And I would say two-thirds of the people at the HOAs park in the parking spots, not their garages. Condos are not big. That's a storage bin for most people, which is against the law. You know, it breaks all fire safety uh things, but they can go through a hundred cars in a half hour. Just check and see if they're open and uh.
People think they're protect, uh protected inside of a gated community and the suspects know that. And so they are a prime location to check car doors.
We have neighbors who have uh put up the Ring cameras and other various cameras in their garages. On their front gates, et cetera. And we've watched video of people just going down the street, checking doors, checking. Car doors, checking car doors.
Yeah, well, just keep pounding on it, that's all you can do.
Tell your neighbors, lock your car, spread the word, lock your car.
Uh I wanted to ask you, and this is one of the first times it's come up, is about Measure U. Uh that was a tax initiative uh that the city put out last November. And uh you formed a uh Oversight Committee to view how that money was to be spent. Now, this is a state ordinance or regulation that uh you have to do it. Uh because of misadventures by certain people all over the state. And uh so uh can you update us on, I think they've had one meeting, maybe two? Uh what are they doing and looking at and have they found any results or is everything going just fine?
So uh we have had two meetings uh thus far with our Measure U uh committee meeting, the most recent being the this past January. Uh where they were provided some training from our city attorney, as well as they elected their officers uh for that committee. And so now they'll be uh overseeing um and advising us on the way we spend our Measure U dollars. Uh which we started realizing in April of two thousand nineteen. So we've uh have approximately either two or three-quarters of that money in the bank now uh from two thousand nineteen. And so now you're gonna see us to start spending that money and really reinvesting back in our community, especially the infrastructure such as our, our community center.
And this Oversight Board is gonna help us uh to identify and track where these funds are being uh applied.
And we want our community to know about it and so.
Fully transparent. I mean, I know uh, going back a few years, uh there were not too many transparencies and things happened. That should not have happened and I hope this Oversight Committee will uh keep uh, keep the train on the tracks and straight ahead.
You'll start seeing billboards up at special locations, kinda the Measure U dollars at work.
Oh wow.
You know, whether it be at the community center, at the beach, so people know where their uh tax dollars are going.
Great, yeah, and I'd certainly like to do a follow-up whenever that's available on, whenever we're uh, we're talking. A general plan with, oh, I'm going to the uh February uh third meeting now, we finished the one on January twenty-first. Uh it was mentioned uh about a general plan. Uh the city is looking into, can you explain what that is to the residents that may not know?
Well, the the general plan, all cities have general plan and uh in gen, in general. Um they are good for perhaps between ten and twenty years. That plan needs to be updated regularly then. I mean, it seems, ten to twenty years seems like a long time, but it's really not. That flies by uh especially the way governments work.
Well, it takes two or three years to get some of these programs just up and running.
Yeah, exactly. So we're in the process of of getting into our general plan and updating it, and that's gonna be quite an involved. Um uh exercise for everybody, so we'll be working on that.
Okay, and again, we'll like to keep updated on uh if anything major comes up that is new and different, that the people would like to know. How's it gonna affect them, good or or bad, or and that would be depend upon the person, uh would it be that way? Uh okay, uh boy, this next one is one of the top two uh issues that the citizens are concerned about, and that is water rates.
Yeah, it's been a while. Uh first of all, the the cost of water i- is going, is going up everywhere. And uh particularly in Ventura County, we get our water from three different sources actually here in the county. One is the uh state water uh system. And that is coming from the Feather River into the Delta and then uh the California Aqueduct down here to Ventura County. Another source of water for the county is coming from the Mojave Desert or coming from uh Colorado River. Another aqueduct coming down in the Southern California area. The agency that handles California State Water is Cuyahoga Water District, and we do purchase water. Approximately twenty percent of our water is purchased from uh Cuyahoga Water District. Very expensive. Uh thank goodness, only twenty percent. Eighty percent of our water comes from United Water, and that is local Ventura County water. The Ventura County River Shed District and uh the well water that that we have. Actually, City of Wainimi has two wells.
Two active wells right now.
We have two active wells in Wainimi. That's on standby. That's emergency water. We don't use that.
If a main pipe breaks or there's some malfunction at the water plant or.
Earthquake up in the Bay Area stops all water together. We would uh, we would have a hard time and so.
Does that stop the canal that runs down?
Yes, it would. So uh anyway, uh and our infrastructure to deliver all our water is very old. And it's getting older all, every day. Uh we have uh most of the infrastructure for a water pipe and delivery, the system is nineteen forty, fifty, sixty timeframe. And we are averaging more than one main break a month. Over the last year and a half. This all needs to be uh fixed. The estimated cost to uh go to work on the infrastructure to deliver this water is approximately thirty million dollars. Now, we're doing very well as a city, but we don't have thirty million dollars in the bank ready to go to work on this. So we are uh looking at ways to uh attack this need that we have. Water rates uh traditionally in Wainimi has been gauged on a seventy percent of your water bill is a set fee. Doesn't matter how much water you use. Seventy percent of your bill is set. Go on vacation for a month, come back, you'll find you have a water bill. And what's that about? Nobody even turn the water on. Set fee. Thirty percent is based on usage. What we've decided to try now to do is to flip this formula around. Seventy percent of your bill is gonna be based usage. Thirty percent will be a set fee. People that reduce their usage in their homes will see a reduction in their water bill. It's not gonna be a lot of money because again, we are putting, every, every last nickel that we make on on the water rates. Is going into this uh bank. We've got somewhere around fifteen, sixteen million dollars. Uh in our CIP, that Capital Investment Program, Improvement Program, and again, we need thirty. So this is gonna help us get to where we need to be to start fixing our infrastructure. And to be able to uh afford water rates that are being increased across the board for everybody in California.
Uh I'm glad to hear that that is changing. One reason is it'll get people's mind more set on conservation. Hey, if I save water, it saves me money. I think that's usually follow the money and you'll get.
Exactly.
You'll get results.
Exactly.
And the other thing is uh, last year at this time, uh I think we had. At least a hundred and twenty percent of the snowpack that we normally had. This year, as of uh January, let's say the first of January, we were at seventy-two percent. There's been a drop, there's been a lot less rain. Sometimes we do in March and April have a late rainy season.
Sure.
If we don't, then we're gonna have to really start looking again, go back on the uh, what the water, uh, what's it called?
The water table?
Well, there's one, two, and three uh different.
Tier grades.
Tears, that uh. Tears that upon how you use it, how you irrigate and all that.
Exactly. Imagine though, when your water rate is based with a set fee of seventy percent of whatever you use, set fee. Businesses that use more water than a home would use. The port, for example, or restaurants, laundromats, they use a lot of water, but they had very small water bill. That's turned around now, so many of our businesses are going to be impacted by this higher water rate. Cause they naturally for their business use more water, but again, homeowners themselves who have been really. Supporting the businesses by having such a high set fee. And the other way around now, we hope that this will help citizens who can conserve.
I certainly do too. Oh, the last thing, and one of my favorites. The city council is looking into giving itself a raise?
No.
Yes, it was on the agenda on two, three, twenty. What, I, I didn't even know you guys hardly got paid.
Council benefits.
Yes, I don't, no, it's not a raise. I, I, I think what the council was voting on was. Three, four years ago now, again, when the financial situation was what it was. Council gave up all of its benefits for serving on the council. Now, they used to be eligible. Council members used to be eligible for whatever the lowest fee insurance. And is it insurance or what else is it?
Deferred compensation.
Deferred compensation benefits. You could start saving money and, and you could get a, a, a match with that. That all went away. Well, now we've reintroduced that. I can tell you that. I'm, I'm not taking it. I, I have insurance, I'm covered through my pension plan, retirement benefits. As well as other council members as well, but we thought it, it now would be a good time to reintroduce it. It doesn't take effect until next year, so whoever will be on the council next year, this is something for the future. It, it doesn't happen right away and it doesn't really apply to most of us on the council. We, as, most of us are retired and are covered by benefits anyway.
That's good to hear, but we'll still be looking out for new cars.
Keep an eye out, watch us, yeah.
I wanna end it, Chief, by asking you, is there, what's, is coming online for the police department in the year twenty twenty? That citizens would like to know about? Any programs or different things?
Well, so we do have a few extra dollars and we're investing back in the traffic safety. You'll see some new traffic message board trailers up. We're putting up some new mobile cameras up and around south of Wayneimi Road. We have this net of ten. Portable cameras that you'll start seeing up on some of the signal poles and we'll be able to tra, track vehicles as well as license plates in and around. The beach area and that's something new that we're doing, especially it'll also track the traffic along Wayneimi Road. Other things that we're doing at the police department, we're looking at body worn cameras for perhaps next year. And we're gonna be implementing some new city ordinances at the next meeting that have to do with the homeless. Such as there's no longer gonna be sleeping on the beach between the hours of ten PM and six AM. There's also not gonna be any bicycles allowed on the beach, on the sand park, just like there's no dogs allowed on the beach as well. And we feel, we believe that's gonna actually address some of the homeless issues that we have out on Wayneimi Beach and in the Ormond Beach area.
Okay, that, you know, the beach is a very, very special place.
Yes, it is.
There's two things that Port Wayneimi and Oxnard in connection and I'm gonna get into that in another. Issue on how we're so interrelated is that the. We're the friendly city by the sea and that's what we're trying to do here is keep it as friendly and good as possible. And the other thing we talk about, our most valuable asset are the beaches, the piers, Ormond Beach. I know there's been, I met last week with Gabriel, Gabriella. And city council member Ramirez out at Arnold Road. And they were talking about how they are gonna get involved in much more so in the beach thing along with. Port Wayneimi, we've become much more, we're talking about the cleanup and it's all interrelated. If we don't help them and they don't help us, then nothing gets done the right way. And there is a, a new. Beach interest thing that's taken on, which is Friends of Ormond Beach. And they've done wonderful things in coordinating both Port Wayneimi and Oxnard people. To come out to Ormond Beach, help clean it up and that. They can be reached at savearmondbeach2019@gmail. They have volunteers too that come out and help clean up, help Stephen. It's an interchanging thing that we do. And I think it's gonna be something that will help both cities reach the goals that they want. So Will, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Tom.
We'll have another city council member after, at the end of February. And Chief, you're, you will be back possibly if we don't have somebody hired and. Be glad to talk to you about it and thanks both of you for serving the city.
Thank you.
You got it, Tom.
Thank you guys for watching and if you have any concerns or questions or suggestions, just let the city council. Members know and, or the police department and they'll funnel them through us and we'll get the answers as best we can. Thank all of you for watching.